Thank you, Kristen. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is two April twenty twenty five, and this is a regular meeting of the Water Valley Select Board. I am the Chair Rich Rita. Here is with me also is Vice Chair Wendy Ratler and Select Board Member Daniel Banclaw. So I see we have a couple here for privilege of the floor.
Quick one?
Please.
Straight light at the end of, solar straight light at the end of West Patterson's not working.
Yeah.
Probably the battery.
It is, and it is not a battery that we can replace. So we're waiting for further discussion on these types of solar lights.
They can't replace the battery? That's not that old.
I, well, the battery is the pole, is the problem. Yeah, it's not a separate battery set.
That was an eight thousand dollars. Last year, what, eight, nine years?
Yeah.
Well, is what it is.
Yep. So we, we are looking at the options to replace it.
One other question, Mark, is kind of, kind of out, out there. The wooden guardrail on Flat Mountain Road.
Yep.
The section of it that's on the part that is owned by Bruce Ron. I'm gonna have to replace it. It's literally crumbling.
Okay.
Do you have any plans to have the guardrail people in here at any time in the future?
We have guardrail that's scheduled out on West Branch Road on the bridge to be replaced.
Would you?
So yeah, I'll let Megan know and have her contact.
Give me a quote, and, but we gotta do it anyway. It's just falling apart.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
All righty. Anything else for privilege of the floor? Let's move on to the minutes. We have a hefty menu of minutes. There are four of them. I think the board collectively has gotten through only one of the four. That would be the twenty five March special meeting.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any further comments, amendments on that particular?
Not on that one.
All right. Can I have a vote to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the March twenty five, twenty twenty five minute amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the other three, I had a comment in one, and I hadn't really, sorry, I hadn't really got an opportunity to go through the other two in detail. The comment was, I think, on the February fifth budget and bond hearing. I think I sent it to everybody, including Kristen. It reads more like a transcript than minutes. And I suspect, I think, Dan, you would, you had put forward the idea that it's what the AI generated from, from the meeting.
It was, but had to be fine tuned, like, a lot more than AI generates.
Right. No, no, I, I didn't mean to imply that. It wasn't. It's just that it was, it looked like it was just the whole AI going through a thing. It just struck me that it was just much too detailed for a normal series of minutes, so.
Well, because that was only one hour a minute, one hour long meeting, rather.
Right.
On the fifth.
The budget and bond?
No, no, the budget and bond. It was the hearing.
The hearing.
Meeting beforehand. Gotcha, gotcha.
Well, what I, what I'd like to do is, is Steve, let Steve and I go through that and, and look at it and work on pairing it back.
Yeah, I think if you look at it, you'll see a lot of detail in there that really is not normally found in minutes. And if people want that detail, there is the video available for them to look at. And then we'll get to the other two minutes, and we'll put all three on the agenda for
Next meeting.
The next meeting. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So let's go ahead and move on to new business. The road repaving projects.
So, as we, as we had discussed previously, we looked at the, or provided you with the bids that we had for West Branch River Road, Packards Road. And we have three bids on each one of them. They confirm the amounts that we had laid out at the town meeting. If, you know, we also provided the specs that Megan used when she solicited these bids from the three companies. The, the recommendations remain with, let's see, I don't know if she actually highlighted them or not in here. I believe it was GMI. Was the low bidder?
No, they did some new math in there. I assume that was.
Okay, which one?
The triple I road under GMI.
GMI, well, we're not doing, we, we deleted triple I. We're not doing that until we get the final decisions from FEMA, so we'll come back and look at that.
Okay.
Yeah. But if you're all right with the low, with the low bid, we've been we can go with it.
And we're comfortable, because their price per ton was quite a bit lower than both of the others.
Yeah.
So we're comfortable that the ninety dollars per ton will be accurate?
Yes. If they had to revise it, we would come back with all three bids again and talk about it.
Okay.
Their price from River Roads actually lower than you had mentioned before.
Yeah, slightly, yep.
Well, every little bit helps.
It does. It does. And again, we still have that outstanding question with regards to River Road and West Branch, right?
Yes.
So.
And was there any concern that, so tally it up, for GMI, they had a hundred and four hours for their flaggers? And comparing that to Pike, they had two hundred and five hours for their flaggers. That sounds like they have a huge.
Well, two people versus one, maybe, depending on how GMI planned to utilize the flaggers. I, I don't know exactly how they did that calculation. I didn't go into that level of detail with Megan.
Okay.
We can check that and find out why there is a discrepancy like that.
Yeah, because most of them do specify two flaggers.
Yep.
Yeah, it specifies two flaggers.
That's what I'm saying.
Um, yeah.
And I'm just wondering if they're seeing the scope of work as being much smaller than, say, Pike is. The RD, R and D paving didn't have flaggers, so I guess that's, people will figure it out.
Okay, yeah, we'll tell them to stop and go.
But that is my.
But I will check with GMI on the number of hours and send you an email.
And just make sure that they're being realistic in their approach.
And do we have any sense of what the duration of this would be?
Uh, no.
It's not there. I mean, they don't lay it out against the schedule.
They don't. I think what we will do, if, you know, once we notify them that we are accepting their proposal, is we will ask them for the actual schedule when they're planning on getting in to town and how long they think it'll take. With these overlays, I don't anticipate that it'll take much more than a week probably for every, for everything that we have scheduled. It's just not that much, and it's just an overlay, so I don't anticipate that. Okay. But like, I think you had mentioned last time, Dan, we will get a schedule from them so that we can post it and we can notify residents.
Yeah.
When the roads would be closed. Yeah, yeah.
And were we looking at doing the add alternates of the gravel shoulders?
Yes, we would like to.
Okay, and we feel confident the gravel will stay there and not just.
Yeah, it won't, it won't just go away. We'd like to have it.
Oh, the only other thing I'd noticed comparing Pike with GMI is Pike had allowed for, on the bridge, an expansion joint repair or repair, I guess, as well as the guardrail, which GMI did not mention.
Yep.
So were those part of the plan for them, or?
I don't know. I'll have to check.
Okay.
Sorry, she's not here. She's in the class today.
That's fine.
So we did not explicitly request the expansion joint repair, correct?
No, we did not have it on.
Right. I just.
I think, I think Pike identified it when they were looking at it, and so we can ask GMI about that. And I will confirm with Megan whether or not we need it.
Okay, please do. Thank you.
Any other questions about any of the proposals?
In the, just quickly, just for the record, so we have a bid Packers Road forty nine, uh, forty seven nine fifty for West Branch Road from the bridge to the power substation of ninety thousand one seventy two. Add alternate there for the shoulders of three thousand six ten. The West Branch Road, what I call the West Branch Road, Triple I Road extension, the, between the substation and Triple I Road of thirty two five sixty five. Triple I Road from West Branch to Ski Area Road, we're not doing right now. I'm sorry, the shoulder also from the power substation to the, to the Triple I Road, the shoulder is one thousand seven ten. So we're not doing that. And then the loop for River Road of thirty three thousand five sixty five and one thousand seven ten for the shoulder. So those would be the bids that we would be accepting at this point. Oh, the Mad River Bridge without the joint repair and the guardrail repairs is nine thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars.
Yeah, they've got a typo there in their number.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit. It made me look three times at L.
Yeah, no, no.
Nine million.
Yes, not nine million.
You're not.
Nine thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars.
Prices are escalating.
Yeah. Not yet.
So do you have enough on the board for any further?
If, if you will do that with these caveats, that I'll check on the expansion joint and the guardrail.
Okay.
If you, if you can vote to accept that bid.
From GMI?
Those totals from GMI.
Right. So the overall total is two hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen and seventy cents.
Any further discussion? No, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the bid from GMI for our road paving projects. As indicated in their response back to our solicitation.
What was that total again, just to make sure?
Two hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and seventy cents. Give or take.
Okay, and for the specific road portions of?
West Branch, from the West Branch Bridge.
Right.
Past the substation to Triple I Road. And then River Road, the entire loop, and Packards Road from Valley Road to Snow's Hook Road.
Okay, and we just have a couple of questions, but that's.
And we have a couple of questions.
That should not change.
Yeah.
Change to both. Okay.
And the Mad River Bridge, too?
And the Mad River Bridge.
There's surface for there.
Very good. Did I hear a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion of town meeting nondiscrimination advisory vote. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the correspondence that the board received? I think there were three pieces of correspondence. One requesting that the town put the advisory, the notice, excuse me, the notice that was, that was approved at town meeting on the town website. Another one that requested that it was in support of that request. And a third with the more detailed reasons why we should do this. Is anyone here to speak? Because I did point out, I think, to, to the folks who asked for this, that we would give them a few minutes ahead of time to talk to us about it. I feel this is putting the board in a bad position, because we don't have anybody to say anything to us more about it. I guess it'll just stand as it stands. We, no, please, go ahead.
I mean, it did pass at town meeting, and I think it's just a matter of figuring out how to appropriately integrate it with the website, which perhaps is up to staff, town staff for recommendation on that?
I don't think we're under an obligation to post it to the town website. And the state as part of the budget negotiations, as basically adding, you know, a provision that's going to make it, if you will, illegal for towns to do anything regarding DEI.
So I guess the board.
Passed yesterday.
So I guess that.
It's passed or passed a branch of the government?
It passed at what?
The House. The House.
It has not made it. It has not crossed over. It's, it's, it was an amendment to House Bill one, which is the state biennial budget.
Yeah.
And it would prohibit towns from taking actions, implementing programs. There was some different language.
Right.
And any related to DEI. So you know, that is an ongoing process that has passed one part of the House. It would have to go to the Senate, and then if it passes, the Senate would have to be approved and signed by the governor.
Right.
As part of the budget bill. I, I think it's very much in process right now and not, not settled really in any way.
I would move that we table this issue until the state resolves their position on it. Because it'll set us up where we're doing something, and then we end up being in violation potentially of
Whatever they pass.
Whatever they pass.
I do think that it's a given that this now has been introduced and it's in discussions, I, I think that, you know, the budget process is probably four or five weeks away from being settled. You know, I, I guess we could just wait those four or five weeks and see what happens, and then we would be talking about it from, you know, a better place than we are right now. There is a lot of uncertainty right now about what we're gonna, and, and these things that they're talking about are actually implementing state laws which would prohibit us potentially from doing what we're doing. And I.
Correct.
I don't, I don't know if waiting is a bad thing.
I can't see that there is any hurry in doing this and you know, putting ourselves in a potentially legally nebulous situation, I don't think is justified or warranted at this point.
Well, except that it was passed at town meeting with some very strong statements in wanting the town to express this as part of our identity.
Okay, I did, let me just, I, I think I should point out, I had one, one of the pieces of correspondence that the board got. I think I circulated, it came to me, but I circulate. Well, no, I think Morgan, Morgan copied everybody, but she had asked that we read it in full. I said, I replied to her and said, we usually don't do that when it comes to correspondence, that I would gist it unless someone came and spoke in favor of it, where they could read it if they wanted to, that I was gonna give people time to present it to us. So let me follow through with that, with that obligation, and she makes, she raises three points. The first one is that the vote was in favor of, and the article passed, and therefore we should move forward with an action to put the notice in a prominent, prominent place. The second point she makes is that that we should look at this in terms of attracting people to work in Water River Valley, that the workforce today already is comprised of millennial and Gen Z in the majority, and that at least one study has shown that these, these generations do take these notices of policy seriously when they're looking at job opportunities. And last she asked us to, well, she says that she's not in favor of a special town meeting, that the issue, as was requested by a correspondence at our last meeting, I think, and that, that the, that there's no need to have a special town, that the issue was decided. And she ends with, with the comment that we should, this would show that the town is a caring and open and diverse community, and we welcome people of all, of all categories, if I can put it that, of all protected categories. And those of us who are not in protected categories, I guess. Well, I'm a veteran, so I guess I'm gonna protect. But the larger.
Everyone is a protected category.
Everyone, yes, that's the better way of putting it. So I think there's a comment from, yes, Kathy?
I, I don't think that by posting it to the website, it would be putting us into any legal jeopardy, because it's not. There's no law currently now on the books. Something happens in a couple of months, then as with any law, I would assume that there's, you know, grace period to then become in compliant with that law, whatever it is. So I would support that you guys discuss putting it on the website or someplace that you feel is prominent, because it did pass at town meeting and you know, and, and it's, it's not going against any state policies.
Right. That's any current state policies at least, yeah.
Okay. Any other comment from the public on the matter? For or against? So I guess what we have in front of us is a board whether to table the motion, or whether to have further discussion today and, and vote on whether to put the notice on the website somewhere. So I think again, I feel a little disappointed that we don't have any, any of the proponents here. I generally am not in favor of tabling it. I think we have a request in front of us. I think we ought to make a decision, good, bad, or ugly, on, on the matter. I, I'd like to do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, town meeting was almost a month ago, and so, or three weeks ago, and so.
So, but where, what, where we.
That raises.
What is it?
That raises the question of.
We pointed out at town meeting that it was advised, we notified town meeting that we follow all, all of the protected classes are protected. It is not a town policy. It, it is, it is part of our personnel policy. That's where it appropriately resides. That's where it is right now. We're in the process of reviewing our personnel policy. I, you know, where we don't have a specific personnel webpage, because it doesn't apply to the entire town. It applies to our workforce. That's where these issues reside as far as town government is concerned. And we, you know, I, I appreciate the, the town vote. I understand it, and we don't currently do anything to violate what the town voted on. We comply with it. And we comply with, with state and federal law. So we, and I, I tried to explain that to the proponents of the warrant article as well. We, we're already doing it.
Right.
So.
I'm just looking on the website currently. And I don't know if it's different on the iPad than today.
I hope not.
I, I mean, as far as the navigational.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it would be, it would be different.
But just looking under, like, there's find it fast. And what if there were a page set up that stated what was voted on at town meeting that could be found under this find it fast?
We already have, we already have a disclaimer page.
Where?
Right.
Is that?
The website disclaimer is at the bottom of the homepage, is a link directing you to it.
The website disclaimer?
Yeah. And it already addresses nondiscrimination policies in the town. It's already written there. We could add the words. So we, if, if, Mr. Chairman, we, we could add the words nondiscrimination disclaimer. I, I mean, it, the language is already part of our website.
As a way to direct people.
As a way to direct people to that statement. It's already on there. It, it's, it is not the exact wording of what town.
Well, we have a nondiscrimination.
But we have a nondiscrimination statement that is required, and we're following the rules.
My, my view on the matter has been that first, this particular article, the language was copied verbatim from the website of the city of Portsmouth. It's a very extensive website, much more extensive than Water River Valley's, of course. And you have to go to one of the departments, there are thirty different departments, I think. Obviously, it's the Human Resources Department, and then you have to click on the policy button, and up pops three other links, one of which is a nondiscrimination notice. And this is listed in the city of Portsmouth's website as a nondiscrimination notice. The exact same language. So you do have to trundle down its, down this particular website to get to the notice. I would point that out. The notice, to me, it's, it was an advisory. I think, I don't consider it a policy, even though it passed as a policy, given the legal opinion. Legal, uh, opinion we received from town council that this could only be advisory. Because we are bound by state and federal law, full stop. And there's nothing that we can do, uh, beyond that as far as. Policy is concerned, it's a statement, it's a notice, it might be, I think that's perhaps why, I don't know, I don't know why. Uh, the city of Portsmouth put it as a notice as opposed to, uh, a policy. Which I, to my mind, has different, different things, a different meaning, we do have. Both in our personnel manual and our, uh, SOP manual for the police and the DPS. Uh, uh, these, uh. Uh, anti discrimination and anti harassment, uh, policies with specific procedures. And my concern would be in giving a prominent place. To this notice that there are, there are some differences in state and federal law and this particular notice. Now, having said all that, I think I would add that we had decided as a board to. Uh, review, uh, personnel, uh, manual this year. And it's, since we do these things, I guess what I'm getting at, these things are in written documents, you're not gonna find the personnel. Paul, or the personnel manual or the police SOPs manual, SOPs on, on the website. And, uh, I think. As part of our personnel policy review, uh, this can be, uh, either just added. As a, as a, as a document to that, uh, to that, as a written document. Uh, might be one way, uh, to approach, it seemed to me to be the better way to approach it, um, rather than a prominent place. On the website. Again, um, um, it's unfortunate, there's no one here really. To speak on the other side, but, um, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, we. I still just feel like we've taken town meeting directives very seriously throughout. Now, that's our job and that was how this vote went and I understand that there's. Some complications as to exactly where it should be or could be or. The implications of it, but I guess I was just to myself kind of having an expectation that we would have some guidance. Um, perhaps from town staff as far as where an appropriate spot in the website could be and how to. How to see that, um, the exact verbiage. I, I take your point that what was there at town meeting was taken from another municipality and, you know. Perhaps we need to. Make something that's more appropriate for ours, we're still hitting on the same points.
I, I'm sorry.
No, okay.
No, I was just gonna say, I think, uh, if I understood town manager correctly, that he would not be in favor. Of putting this, uh, uh, tha- that is the advice from.
Given that we already have the disclaimer, that we could, we could change the notice of the disclaimer to say non. Discrimination disclaimer, or instead of just website disclaimer.
Yeah, the website disclaimer is kind of a, yeah, difficult.
But again, the drill down that you have to do with the city of Portsmouth is five or six clicks. Into their human resources page.
Right.
I mean, it's.
And we don't have any resources page.
Of the city, it's not a statement about the entire city, it's a statement about. Their hiring practices for the city of Portsmouth.
Right.
It, you know, and which, which is the same thing as what we do in our personnel policy.
Right.
You know, that's.
But it's not, none of that's on, we don't have it on the website.
That is, is on the website, the personnel policy is not.
Sure.
On the website.
Yeah, I guess I can see, like, at, from the homepage, it does just say website disclaimer, but then when you get to it, it's website disclaimer and privacy policy.
Yeah.
Perhaps if on the homepage, it was. That's.
We just changed website and non discrimination, if that's. If, if that's acceptable to you for right now, we'll see what the state says. You know, and we'll, we'll go through our, our personnel policy review like we're planning to do.
Right.
For the work plan for the year and. Take it up in those. At those times, is that?
I mean, it seems to make sense to me, I don't think we, uh, with regard to no, um. Proclamations or sense of town meetings, we don't, we have no place to put those.
Not right now.
I mean, not right now.
We also have a website.
Well, it goes in the town report, but in terms of a website, we don't have a place to put.
No.
No, no, we don't.
We have a website review.
And that's the other thing we're doing this year, and we're looking at a website review and. Uh, because I was looking for, I mean, I will admit that, uh, we're a bit. Old fashioned and clunky here, I was looking not that long ago for a proclamation and. There's no, it wasn't there, so I had to come in the town office and say, could I have a copy, please, of this? Of this proclamation, um, and maybe that's something we should address too as part of, uh. Our website review, so we have a personal policy. Uh, a HR review, basically, we're having a website review this year. Hopefully, the, I don't know if the DPS is going through an SOP.
No.
Review, it's probably constant, yeah, but not this year.
Not this year.
This year, okay.
So.
Is that okay?
When. They were trying to gather signatures for the, get this on as a, you know, as a warrant. I was approached. And they asked if there were any cases or explicit cases they could cite. Where there had been discrimination and all of these various things. And they couldn't cite anything. And when I pressed further. It was because that man had been voted into office. This is vehement anti-Trumpism, okay, that led to this. Okay, now that wasn't discussed at the town meeting and I think they were very careful. Not to. And what happened was a vote was taken, really in my mind, under false pretenses. And so. And if, and if, it was probably if we looked at it, it was what, sixty forty roughly?
Man, that percentage.
So it probably, yeah, percentage wise, so it probably falls somewhat along the lines of. You know, party affiliations and talents. And I really. Don't think that this measure, that even in one of the emails today, they mentioned as being divisive. Um, is appropriate. Okay, so I'm not going to support this under any circumstances. And further to that statement. This group had the gall to actually claim that one of our town members. Was a member of white privilege. A male, in fact, white male privilege, in fact. If you think about that term, that's very discriminatory and it's hateful and it's disgusting. The very group that's trying to get this posted to this town. Has the gall to say that about one of our town, very well respected town members, okay?
Okay.
And they went so far as to actually infer that our police department would be discriminatory as well. Yet, they couldn't, of course, cite any examples of that. And I'm offended that they would even consider that to be the case, we have an outstanding. You know, police department in this town.
I, I didn't hear any implications against our police department and I would hate to, to further that.
That's.
I, I think there.
So I, I am not going to vote for this in any respect. Okay?
So I think, uh, this is the very thing I think I was very worried about, uh, when, uh. This first came up and, uh, when, as a result of the vote, it did pass. Where, with the request for a, a special meeting, uh, I don't think we absolutely do not want to go down on that road. So I think we have a path forward. As, as to use this notice to change the website, to make it clear that if you click on this link. Uh, it will take you to the town's, uh, anti, uh, discrimination, uh, statement. Which, uh, is exactly what it needs to be with regard to state and federal law. I think we then, uh, also use this notice, uh, as it was said several times by the proponents. That it was, uh, they understood that it was advisory and that we use it in our. Uh, review of the, uh, personnel manual and also look at. Uh, when we do the website review, is, is there, uh, uh, redesign? I- is there a page we should have just for these sorts of things, whether it's proclamations? You know, this is such and such day or we're, we're, where we want to honor somebody or even in memoriam, I mean, we really don't have.
That's a really good point, I've been thinking about that, yeah, like you have certain people's days and that's lost to history.
It's, it's in paper in a file somewhere, but it may be in a video that's buried. Probably not in, uh, chronological sequence somewhere. Um, so, uh, perhaps that's the best, uh, the best path forward at, at this time and we could, we could move on.
Yeah.
Dan, do you, uh, agree at this point, oh, we should move on that direction? I think it's a good. It gives us, it'll give you an opportunity when you look at the personnel manner, if you see anything that you feel is not, um. Appropriate and there's also the state action that may or may not, uh, factor into this.
We have already planned activities for the select board, which includes. Um, website review, which includes.
Personnel policies.
And. Certainly, those will be happening, they will not be happening tomorrow.
Right.
So that everybody's aware of that.
Yeah.
And it will take time.
I think we had a, a.
Well, we know that the website review is this summer.
Yep.
June-ish, summer fall.
And I think when we went over these things, uh. Somewhere in my notes, we had a personnel review, we had.
The personnel policy review would be in the summer as well.
Right. Yes.
And, and just as a follow up to that, because I don't have it down here and I, any other item. I did speak to Margaret and she will work with us, she's agreed to work with us on that personnel policy review.
Right.
So we'll set up a timeline for that and I'll report back on that at a future meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Great.
Let's move on.
Yep.
The charter cable franchise agreement renewal. That's another exciting topic.
Another exciting topic, so, um.
Dan, Dan may need a little bit of, you're gonna get some background.
So just a little bit of background, Mr. Chairman, um, a few months ago, Dan, um, we had. Been approached, we had discussions with town council about how to go about. Uh, renewal of our cable franchise agreement. We talked to town council about it, they were not comfortable that they had the expertise. In this particular area of the law, we were given, uh, Kate's name, uh, and. Uh, Donahue Tucker and C and Della were recommended, uh, because they. Specifically work on franchise agreements for municipalities. Um, we had the review, uh, by Kate Miller, um. Started, but it, it was suspended. Uh, we, you know, weren't really ready to move forward with it prior to, to getting into the budget season and.
Sure.
And, um, then town meeting, um, so when Kate sent this email to restart the process. I shared, uh, the email with the board and she has already gone through our. Franchise agreement, uh, from the previous conversations that we had had with her. Um, she is willing to come in and discuss any questions that you might have on the red line copy. Um, I know you haven't had it very long, so you can keep looking at it. We can do it the, the April sixteenth meeting or we can even do it in May, there's no immediacy. Uh, to this review, so you can take it up whenever you want.
Okay.
Um, I would like to try to have. One or two meetings notice so that we can arrange to have Kate attend if you want to do that. Um, I just recommend to the board that you continue to work with her on these revisions. And I think the actual date, uh, is next year.
October of twenty six.
October of twenty six, so you, you have plenty of time to work on this, so.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have a pretty full agenda the next few meetings.
And so waiting until May or June is not a problem.
I will be gone for at least one of the main.
Yeah, so why don't we push it off to sometime in the summer, if we, if we can catch our breath and have a slower meeting? We won't have a slow or, I'm not as full meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where we could, uh, perhaps have Kate come in and.
Yeah.
And answer any questions.
And she can attend by video, she doesn't have to be here for this, um. So I'll let her know that you're gonna continue to review it, that probably July, August timeframe. You know, who knows, um, if that's all right, is that okay?
Yeah.
Kristen and I will put it on our.
Yeah, on the tickler.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Hmm. Does, does he stand with, uh, the, uh, service provided by the, um, co-op?
The service.
The broadband.
Whether they were gonna come up to Waterville Valley.
Whether they were coming to Waterville.
Waterville Valley, yes.
Uh.
We have discussed.
That was a county wide project and that. I don't know if that is on hold, um, I've heard that a lot of the funding.
If you look at the latest map that surrounds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I saw that.
We've invited them in several times, we've had people from the.
Right.
From the, uh, provider, uh, the contractor come in that the county was working with, right, Steve?
Yeah, about two and a half, three years ago, we were visited by one of the engineers. Who was supposedly going to be mapping out the project.
And we said that we're, we were okay with it.
Interested and ready to go and it's been probably a year, year and a half since I've heard from them.
It's, it's just curious. The charter is, uh, is a for profit operation that will squeeze every nickel out of you they can get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have a, a co-op. Basically circling us completely with, with offering their own.
It perhaps is related to the fact that I think their, their, uh, their charter. Is to provide broadband to areas that do not have it.
I understand, but.
So we'll be, we'll leave low on the priorities.
At some point, they're gonna run out of places that are.
Well, we can, we can re, we can certainly re.
Have told them that we are, if they want to come up forty nine. They can have services into the community with no issues. Um, so we'll.
When you sign with charters, don't you?
Huh?
You have an issue when you sign an agreement with.
Uh, we can certainly talk to Kate, I don't think.
It's exclusive, as I understood it, because we had this discussion.
Franchise agreement.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure, that's actually a good question to ask Kate when she comes in is.
Right.
Can we make, you know, are we making sure that this is a non-exclusive franchise agreement so that.
I understand what the co-op is trying to do, they've had a lot of areas that have poor. Uh, poor situation, we don't, we have a good situation.
Yeah.
But we paid for it.
Good most of the time, for most of us, for most of us, most of the time. Yeah, I mean, I think we can certainly, uh, certainly be part of our discussion with Kate and certainly, uh. Uh, it's something we can reengage with the co-op about. They sent out in their newsletter, they, there was the monthly newsletter, I think.
Yes, I did see that.
Did see that, where they were talking about future, where they were and where they plan to go and nice little.
Except they just saw the towns they're in.
Right, and then this is. Yes.
If we're not there at all.
Right.
Well.
That's the question.
Yeah, we're gonna be in one of the groups.
So we just need to reach back out, we just need to reach.
Yeah, I think we could, I think it'd be helpful to have that.
And that's a Bill Jonstone, uh, question, like where are they with it?
In the matter, and that actually, uh.
Is there another point of contact we should be speaking?
And I imagine Katie would want to know that, what their plans are, she's looking at this as well for our discussion.
Is that the same development that the town manager at Lincoln was suing to?
Yeah.
I can check with Eric and Alex.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Great, great point, thank you. Okay, anything else we'd like to say on the cable, charter cable franchise agreement? Okay, anything else we'd like to say on the cable, charter cable franchise agreement renewal, okay? Let's move on to.
As short, the title's as short as I can.
Oh, business, so the wastewater treatment. Project.
Hi Dylan.
Plant project update. We've, uh, we, I think we can say a couple of things about it. Dylan, would you like to, to lead off?
Yeah, I, I don't know what, what do you think?
Well, no, that we've met with, uh, you, you guys constantly meet with Black and Beach, but Black and Beach representative, the lead engineer, right Mario?
Frank Cucci.
Frank Cucci, thank you. Uh, did come here and we had a. Good solid meet with him for a couple hours going over one aspect of it. And there's, we're looking for some more, uh, information about, about the project.
If, if to touch on that, uh, we received the updated.
Right, that was part of our discussion.
And we're sharing that with town council, uh, to have his review of it. Um, because that's gonna lead into conversations with the Forest Service. So before we schedule that, we wanna, we wanna talk to him.
Right.
Make sure that everything that's in the technical memo, uh, is.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be a few.
Needs his.
Suggested by him, just because. He's done for service much more frequently, uh, at least on a larger scale than B and B has, but, um. The, the only other, well, not the only other, one of the, the other major components that's. Very since, uh, the last meeting was we, we were awarded Ellie Johnson that contract for the tree clearing over here on this.
Right.
Their schedules begin that work April fourteenth, uh, and. So that's technically.
So the weather cooperates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, which they wanted to wait until April fourteenth because of the snow. You know, they wanna try to hopefully get that snow out without. Having to find things the hard way, you know, if they can try to see what's there to begin with.
Time is somewhat of the essence, but we could, April fourteenth works, right? As far as B and B is concerned.
Right, and then in the RFP, it did say, uh, work to be completed. Uh, technically to say before the end of May, but they're not, I don't think they're anticipating, uh, before, yeah, before the beginning of May rather. They're not anticipating that full month and a half or three weeks to do the work.
Oh, that right, okay.
Uh, in case something comes up or they have piece of equipment that has.
Yeah, I'd imagine they build in some contingency time.
Right.
We, we are also able to, they act, uh, Johnston actually had the idea to not interfere with. The.
Oh, we got around the little storage area.
Oh, good, storage area, so.
Yeah, what we came up with was essentially there was a few small runs, uh, that were, we were gonna come off this contracted yard. Truly, at least in my opinion, uh, the alternative which we discussed was to just have those three small ones come off of. Uh, one longer one that's already gonna be cut in anyway, so you won't see it, the cuts as, as much from clean water and triple I. Because there'll be spurs off of the cut that's deeper into the woods to begin with, so be a little bit more hidden, uh, and it's more accessible for the. Or contractor anyway, because there's a pretty good sized hill. You can't even tell behind that contract here and drops off a bit, uh, so it, it works out well. Especially if you don't have to disturb the contractor from their space right now, so.
Right, as long as Johnston is aware that they gotta be done by.
Right.
Beginning of May, then we're, we're good there, okay?
Yeah, and, uh, I don't, other than that, I mean, I, I don't really have any, any major.
Right, we're waiting on, we're waiting on B and V to give us more information.
Right.
So that we can discuss this with council further. There was one, uh, correspondence that came in and I'm gonna just bring it forward here, because one of the questions asked. Was, uh, on the wastewater treatment, uh, plant. Uh, I'll distill down, it was simply, um. And I would like information about how the town is handling the resorts share of the cost of the project for the sewer. Septic, uh, which we're still deciding upon. Uh, the short answer is it will be through taxes because the town is responsible. Uh, whether we put in a new line or whether we, uh, change over to a, a septic system. I, I think that's pretty much the answer.
Yeah.
On it. At this point, we did mention this at town meeting, I think a couple of years ago. Uh, we had included in the project, uh, it was five million dollars. For this part of the, the project and we're still working through, uh, deciding. What to present to the Forest Service, uh, which we, which we need to get, uh, from whom we need to get approval. Uh, to do a septic system, uh. On the resort, uh, area because, uh, that is our preference for a variety of reasons, which we've discussed a number of times. We don't have to go over any of all that. I just wanted to answer that, that question that was in correspondence. So if you have nothing else, uh, Dylan, we'll move on to the road sign review and approval. See, we have a show and tell. Yeah, a little mockup.
Everyone in the line can see it.
It's kind of a little, maybe a little, might be a little. No, other way. So this. So this is the exact size.
This is the exact thing, it'll be on a, you can see the attachment here, it's a, a round metal post. Um, that it will sit on top of. Um, and the height can, you know, can be whatever we want, but we do want it. Um, probably what, seven, eight feet, I don't know, Megan has the, the actual dimensions for the length of the pipe. So that it's, it, there is a, believe it or not, a federal standard for road signs.
Well, it probably has to do with the.
Well, that's right, and these road signs are required, um, by the E nine one one system. To help guide.
Now, will the.
This will say Valley Road, not just.
Not just that, yeah.
Yeah.
Will the posts be galvanized like that, or they be painted like?
Well, we have wood now, right?
Yeah.
Well, we have wood now, I, the plan here was for galvanized to be part of the integration with the. The, because it'll be a metal post.
Right, that's what I, so it'll be a very different look.
It will be a different length than what we have right now.
So.
The other note is all the white paint, the triple I road and valley road. Piece will be reflective paint, um, by the regulation for E nine one one.
I like the style, I think they look fine.
And the material that they're made of, um, we think will be better. We've had some problems with the metal signs that we tried to use, they got bent, they, you know, they just don't wear well. This is kind of a Trex material, so should have a pretty good lifespan.
Did she mention it black galvanized as an option?
Uh, I'll check with her. You want it to be inobtrusive.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, it's, it's a nice printed green.
I have sort of like an upscale look of a wooden clothes.
Get all the, all of the metal components blackened.
That would be nicer.
Darker.
Okay, yeah, the other question I would ask you to, if we're gonna investigate anything on this. I don't have a problem with them, but would be if the edges were rounded. Rounded over a bit, it looks very sharp, like if somebody were to. You know, catch the end of the, like a lower one.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's a sharp point right there.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, we can look in.
I don't know if it's not, and that's available, it's just something to consider.
Yeah, it may look a little better if it's been more rounded.
And if it's easier to not get chipped off.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, sure, let's see.
Just thought.
Right. I'd imagine they can do, it's just a matter of.
If it affects the cost.
Yeah.
Yep, well, yes.
But we can see, we have costs for these.
My comments mean within the cost framework.
Right, or reasonably close enough. If it's a little extra, and I think we all would like the rounded.
Yeah.
I think we would be fine with that.
Yeah.
Cause I think we have costs for each one, uh, I don't have, I didn't bring that paperwork with me, but Megan gave us a cost per.
Yeah, it's like two hundred something.
Right. Alrighty.
I will check those two things.
Right, if we're down with the roadside review, excuse me, let's move to the town manager update. And, okay, crazy time in Concord, what's happening with current New Hampshire legislation? We heard one thing going on, there are many things going on.
There are many things.
Corresponding with our legislature, House and Senate.
We have.
Getting our two cents in for what it's worth.
So first, the education funding, I went to a hearing at the Senate Finance Committee yesterday that went well. Um, there were, um, four speakers before the committee. Uh, one in favor, three opposed to the bill. Um, the, uh, there were very few questions, um. Primarily, uh, it looks like the committee is gonna retain the bill in committee. Um, this is House Bill seven thirty nine, uh, until there is a decision on the Rand appeal. Before the Supreme Court.
And when is that due?
There's no due date, it's whenever the court issues it.
But they understand that time is of the essence.
Time is of the essence, so, um, they're gonna retain it. And we'll, you know, depending on how the Rand case goes. Will depend on whether or not they dispose of it in the committee or whether they bring it out and do it. So if we lose the Rand case, they would take this bill and move it forward as the implementation. Of the Rand.
So they come out, pass recommendation?
They, it would if Rand is found to be that we have to return the, uh, swept.
If it's held up as a constitution.
If we prevail, uh, before the Supreme Court and, and it's found constitutional that we keep the money. Then it becomes inexpedient to legislate and it's.
Okay.
All right.
So that is sitting there, um. There, there have been a lot of actions, uh, in the House, uh, approving bills. Um, that NHMA has opposed, that we have opposed, the zoning amendments. Um, have all moved through the House, uh, and they're, they're before the Senate now. Um, so we have to see how those committee hearings go, those are the ones that. You know, relative, everything from the building permit questions to the accessory dwelling unit questions. Uh, goes to.
Lot size.
To minimum lot size, those have all passed the House, they're moving over to the Senate.
Have a huge impact on our zoning.
Parking.
Parking, we'd change, we'd have to change our parking zone.
Yeah.
All of those, we'd have to make significant changes to our zone.
Yeah, so we'll see how they, what happens to them in the Senate. Um, the, uh, House Bill two eighty four requires tax impact statements on municipal warrant articles. Uh, in the town report, that passed the House. Um, and it's at the Senate now, um, let's see, uh. One good thing that NHMA has supported, um, is, uh, including municipal public works facilities. Uh, in the calculation of, uh, calc- eligible cap- capital facilities for. Assessment of impact fees on development, that would be a positive thing, right now it's primarily. Uh, infrastructure, utility infrastructure like water sewer lines and public safety related things. Uh, but this, you know, adding, uh, you know, even plow trucks or anything that's in our capital program. For the DPW, uh, as part of the impact fee structure, could, that could be a good thing. Um, the, uh, there were four bills on election law that NHMA had opposed. They all passed the House, so moving forward, they're just, um, you know, voters providing. Documentation on identity to, in order to get absentee ballots.
Right.
Um, and, uh, just a host of other things. Um, re- uh, requiring towns. To allow voters to request hand counts of ballots instead of using ballot machines, which would. Slow down election results in larger communities.
Yeah.
I mean, we already hand count, so that's not an issue for us, but it certainly will cost a lot of time and effort. And money for larger towns to do. Um, let's see, what else do they have? It's just so much fun to read these legislative summaries. Um, the ambulance, uh, balance billing. Bill, uh, passed the House and is in front of the Senate. Um, that would prohibit towns from utilizing balance billing. Which is the difference between the Medicare reimbursement and actual costs. Um, they would set the limit at two hundred percent of Medicare. Uh, which for us would mean a significant non-tax revenue loss. In, in the tens of thousands of dollars.
In other words, the town would be.
The town would have to.
Pay the difference.
Pay the difference, so. Um, that was not a good outcome, but that's what happened. Um, let's see, uh. A bunch of other smaller bills, unfortunately, all of them were opposed by NHMA, but all passed the House, so.
Mark, you wanna say about SB two nine seven?
Uh, SB two nine seven with the Health Trust has made it through the, I'm SB two ninety seven. Has made it through the Senate, uh, and is at the House right now. Um, there's the webinar I sent you the information on, uh, will be, staff will be watching. The webinar and it will be recorded, uh, this has to do with, um. The health insurance pool that the town belongs to, along with about two hundred other towns in the state. Um, it would basically change the whole way that they have to do business, so. Could be significant costs to the communities. If it changes, because it's not changing to the good for us.
Whatever does.
Whatever does. So, um, yeah, we're.
Okay.
We're dealing with a lot of stuff, the how, the, uh, budget. Uh, discussions are also not really in municipalities favors. They have made at least some cuts to our state revenue sharing, the road. Uh, revenue sharing and, uh, meals and rooms taxes. Uh, that what gets sent back to the communities, which for us offsets tax rate. Um, they have been cut at least once and there are still some significant shortfalls. On the revenue side of the state budget, from what I understand.
Yeah, where they look to try to close it, was it five hundred million dollar?
Uh, and I think they got it down to two fifteen to about, so.
With these cuts.
It's still, yeah.
Yeah, it started out somewhere over eight hundred million dollars. And they're whittling away at it with, by making cuts. And I'm not sure we're about, what, a couple hundred million left to go, they say.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
Let's go ahead and move on to department operations review. I see we have written reports from DPS, DPW and Recreation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I just, would that, if you wanna present any of it, or is any questions in any of those? Agree, and then we have, we have, uh, we have.
You have, you have the other two departments.
I had a couple of questions.
Yep.
There was, um, you sent an email with respect to. Um, a frozen water line upon.
Yep.
Beam back your road. And the question I have was, is that a town issue?
Yes.
Or is that on there?
No, it, it ended up being the town's service, so portion of the service.
The rules and regs are written, yeah. Town or owns a portion of the service line and is a few different criteria, but essentially, um. All the criteria on this one ended up being that the curb stop, uh, be owned to the curb stop in this instance. And it was frozen from before the curb stop up to the main. So the town is responsible for this instance, so everything from.
Okay.
The curb stop, which is where we shut off the water service, uh, was not frozen, so the whole water's portion wasn't frozen, it was the town's portion.
Okay.
So, and to be clear, that's the second time, same property.
Same property, and I was, that. Um, and the question I have is, is everything of proper depths and everything?
Well. Well.
So, and I know that that's a potential issue because.
Yeah.
Um, that property originally was just solid granite, to be honest with you.
Yes.
And so the, I was wondering whether the lines, if you will, on our side, the town side maybe.
The town side, the lines, the lines are of uh, five, six feet.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, when they were installed, given the drainage that also had to be installed. There was a culvert put over the water line. And because the culvert is empty, it's cold, right, it is not ground. So, we had a similar issue on the other side of the cul-de-sac. Uh, probably ten, fifteen years ago. We had to dig it all up, and it was the same thing with the water line being covered by the culvert. And the culvert causing cold, so we insulated between the two. But you have to dig up the entire area.
Yeah.
To expose it so that you can insulate it, and then we put a heat trace on it. So, we're getting a price from a contractor to do that work. We will not be able to do that work until after town meeting next year, because we don't have the funds appropriated for it. So we're getting a price so that we can do an estimate for a town meeting appropriation.
And that would fix a problem for a single house.
Well, that's right, and the other one that we did was for four houses, so, yeah.
The question I have, it's a simple question, actually. Is that solving the entire problem, or do we have a problem, you know, fifty feet down the road, a hundred feet down the road in that area?
It's a good point, Dan, uh, it, it would, it would fix the problem, so this service line, it has what you had. And just stated about the property, if you looked at it before the house was built, no one would have ever thought that was a developable lot.
I looked at it, I know.
I've heard, so, um.
I don't have that much money.
The way that it, I mean, part of the issue is that everything, if you look at the hillside, you can tell everything is ledge, and everything beneath. Whatever covers underneath the water main is also ledge, so there's nothing isolating that pipe either. Uh, and it runs across that whole cul-de-sac with other cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, I mean, it's a compounding, you know, issue after uh, issue that compounds it. So to you, to your point though, it would solve that issue.
There's not another, we, when we did the repair, the ten or fifteen years, I forget what year we did it. We actually looked at this service line, and we said, while we're digging, should we dig that up? And literally, we looked at it and said, no one in their right mind would ever build up there. We're not going to spend, because it was tens of thousands of dollars more.
I appreciate that.
So, so we just said, no, we're not going to, but now it is a service, it's in use, and. We have, this is our town's portion.
Ultimately, this was and is a planning board issue, right? When, when the plans were accepted by the planning board, uh, this issue was not raised.
Twenty years ago.
Right.
Yeah, and so it was a different time, and we're reaping some. Inadequacies, so.
Okay.
Or when the house was being built, right?
Well, no, when the house was being built, again, it, if somebody. Honestly, if, if that was, if that was occupied full-time, we might not have the problem that we have. Because water would be continually moving, and.
There's a couple other factors that complicated, um, and certainly, all of those things would help, but it, it's. Part of it, the issue is because it was built so high up on the hill, the pressure going through the house is low. You know, it builds, the house is higher than our rest, our drinking water.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, there's a number of issues um, that, that kind of exacerbated the problem to begin with.
Yeah, and, and we'll fix it, and we'll insulate it, put a heat, heat trace on it. After we appropriate the money to do it, and we'll, we'll fix it.
Since we're on municipal services, any, anything else, water or current, current wastewater operations?
One of the main things that I mentioned is that, but, but the board know that that was, that work was completed uh, Friday, Thursday, actually, last week, um. And had an awful lot of itch, I wish you was really getting there, getting to it, getting it thawed, um. Majority of the line was frozen though, I mean, if you're talking. Ninety feet, probably about seventy feet of it was frozen, um, so, again, I mean, it's just, yeah.
This, this, this could be an issue for Snow's Mountain if we were to bring the sewer up there, right?
Well, this is for a water line, but for sewer.
Um, sewer or water.
Yeah, I mean. That is, that, it would be, in my opinion, uh, if we did the same type of sewer design on Snow's Mountain Road that we have on West Branch River Road.
We'd have that, cause they have low, low occupancy, so therefore a low movement.
Exactly.
So to speak.
Yep. Um, other than that, it's just been continued operation, doing some maintenance, checking out the collection system, forgetting the spring. Wanna make sure we don't have any surprises when all, all groundwater starts to make a swing in the system, um.
Oh, no more.
Yeah, but otherwise, good to go unless you have any questions.
No, I don't, thank you so much, I appreciate your response.
So let's, uh, why don't we roll down, I'll get to Steve, but why don't we just roll down the different department written reports, so, is there anything you wanted to highlight in Public Works?
Uh, no, they're, they're in training, they're just finishing up the winter.
Any questions from the board on Public Works report? Uh, public safety, anything you'd like to highlight?
Nothing.
Well, I had a comment earlier, and that was that there had been a, you know, some.
An ongoing.
Ongoing police activity that they were working on. Um, so, Mark had already answered that, just quickly, it was nothing else.
Anything, uh, my, uh, moving on to Recreation, anything?
Uh, no.
You'd like to highlight?
Just continuing with their after-school program, working on Earth Day beautification, and then uh, town cleanup. Which will be at the beginning of May.
I think they picked a date, right? Did they pick a date yet? I think I have that, I might, I may be misremembering.
Uh, no.
She doesn't say? I thought she mentioned it earlier, maybe not, I can't remember.
She may have, but it was like May.
Well, it'll be sometime in.
It'll be the beginning of, first week of May, I think, first full week.
Do we post that up on the website?
Yeah, we'll post it.
Yeah. Um, I did have one question with regard to the uh, beautification project.
Yeah.
I know that the uh, Rec Department are responsible for those various islands of flowers we have at intersections. Is this gonna replace?
No.
Well, I thought.
We've turned away from that over the last couple of years, and they've been by volunteers.
Well, but we've been providing, we've been providing.
Yes, and we've been providing material.
Alright, so, better say, we're not responsible, we've been providing materials for those who want it, otherwise they would just revert.
Correct.
To a normal intersection with the sign and, and no flowers, so, uh, what they're talking about, are they going to be? Uh, permanent that the town would maintain? Or is this still gonna be part of the, it wasn't clear to me from the write-up whether this, if you wanna read it, I mean.
Yeah, no, it's, it's uh, Earth Day Beautification Project with the Conservation Commission. Um, the elementary school and DPW, they're gonna create two small garden beds. Um, I think it's gonna be along Packard's Field, uh, and so. They'll be semi-permanent, I mean, they can be moved if they don't work in the locations that they choose. Uh, but the idea is to just have.
Oh, sure.
Flowers.
Wanted to know if this was gonna be.
Yep, it'll be an ongoing.
An ongoing, uh, maintenance issue.
Brooke talked to me about this, and they're gonna be small flower bed areas, it's, you know, it's like with all of the other sites. It's difficult to get water to them, you know, so they're, they don't wanna create anything that's gonna be a high maintenance area.
I thought I read that they were looking at like native plants.
Yeah. And that's why they're working with the Conservation Commission. And trying to identify native.
Not necessarily looking at pretty summer flowers.
Well, they're beautiful.
Yeah, but you can, you can put those in, but the main.
They're beautiful in their own New Hampshire way.
Right.
Yes.
Um, speaking of which, uh, where is the uh, flowers, the barrels, is that gone, done with?
Barrels, yeah.
Uh, they, is, uh, since Sean has departed, is that program dead? For lack of a better word?
I don't know. I could reach out to Sarah who works with them and ask if she knows anything.
Uh, because I think, uh, I, some people would like to take over.
Some of them.
Some of them.
Flower.
Yeah, like we had, yeah, yeah, that was all part of a program.
Year, I know.
No.
Like, they're still sitting around.
Yeah.
They had stunningly beautiful flowers last year, I took some amazing pictures.
Yeah, that was part of a program that, I don't know, how many years did we do that, is Sean?
Yeah, three or four.
Three or four years, and the town contributed, we, we set aside monies, and it was, it was managed by. Uh, the former owner of the Snowy Owl, uh, he's now, um.
The owner of the chop house.
Yeah, now, is still the owner of the chop house, so I don't know if he intends to go forward with this and maintain him, I, I thought he was moving away from it, and that. Uh, people, uh, who had it, uh, near their property would, would, uh. Could potentially take it off if they wanted to keep it, if not, we just can't, obviously, you have to make this, we'll have to, we'll have to pick him up.
Because last year, he didn't really do any oversight.
No, I think that he just kind of cut completely off of it.
Yeah.
So I don't, that was my working assumption, is that he no longer intends to.
Right.
To manage, uh, run such a program, uh, cause he was the one that was pretty much out there with getting the flowers. Watering in and all of that, and then some, I think, uh, Craig, uh, Larson, the golf course took over the barrels. Uh, alongside Boulder Path, since it goes right through his property, the road goes right through his property, uh. Others may have taken over, I don't know, but so. Probably time to start trying to figure out what's going on.
Yeah, well, I have no problem with calling Sarah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
But there's been no talk in the town core working group then about those, okay.
They, were they left out to overwinter?
Yeah.
So they're probably mostly selling apart pretty soon.
They, they've kind of, they kind of look okay, but I mean, a few years of the winter, they'll probably start.
Yeah.
Breaking down and.
Well, I'll ask Sarah.
The flowers are a pretty dramatic addition to.
No, I thought it was great, it was very nice.
It is a lot of work.
I took a lot of beautiful pictures last year, and, um. You know, I actually have a link with hundreds of pictures, there's so much beauty within Waterville Valley that. You know, a lot of us just walk by, we don't see, if you stop and take a moment to look around you. You'll see that we live in a stunningly beautiful place.
Yeah.
And some of them are just, they're amazing, I, I took a picture of one, it looks like an alien. That was down by the academy, um. You know, so I'm a strong proponent of continuing.
Well, let's see what, uh.
Let's see what.
I imagine it hasn't been discussed at the Resort Association, putting any funds, could you ask the treasurer? About that?
Treasurer says no.
No, and I, 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 I don't think the treasurer is gonna say yes, or the. Or the Resort Association is gonna wanna pick it up.
Seriously, if someone had a serious plan to oversee and do the watering, I think is the biggest thing that Sean realized.
Be able to scrape up money from various.
You know, yes.
Various places.
Chin, but we need someone to do the actual work, and that's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, alright, so we'll just check on that. Um, that was it on Rec, uh. Let's see, I went through, wrote through, so Administrative Services, Steve, uh, anything to report?
Thanks, thanks, George. An update on our new hire in our finance department, Katie Crawford, coming in as the finance administrator. Her training is progressing quickly, she's getting caught up to speed with the BSNA software package suite, um. Faster than I had anticipated, so I'm really happy in that regard. On Friday, we have our senior auditor with Bashan Kukey coming in for a visit. Kind of just to give her an introduction to the audit process and what to expect towards the end of the month when we, uh, will be having our audit. Um, so, looking forward to that. I, uh, wanted to commend also the department heads on doing a, a great job in being fiscally conservative during this time of year. Where our cash flow is a little tighter than it is the rest of the year, um, given the fact that we have our, our first period. Uh, property tax bills set to be mailed in mid-May. Update on the water and.
Can't wait.
On the water and sewer reconfiguration, uh, we have been getting some phone calls in town hall. Uh, concerning the new reconfiguration, uh, recently since our, uh, most recent mailing that we did. The questions are around, um. People now having an interest, I think, in looking at their property record cards. And seeing what those cards indicate for the amount of bedrooms and bathrooms that are listed there. And then looking in their own properties and saying.
Fine, yeah, good.
This might be a little different than what I conceive of, or what I, what I think I have for bedrooms and bathrooms.
We discussed what a definition of a bedroom is, well, bathroom is obviously a, a bathroom, but I, you know, if they want, absolutely. Let's get, let's get the accurate count.
Yeah.
If they, they wanna come in and double check, we know, we're certainly not gonna go out and into all the properties and.
Yeah.
Count them.
Well, I, I just.
I hope not.
I did speak with our assessing team today.
Yeah.
And, um.
Uh-oh.
The assessors do.
They, they said that they would be happy to schedule a day in late May.
Oh, alright.
To come out and field some inquiries, but just wanted to remind the homeowners that inviting them into their home to do an assessment of the bedrooms and bathrooms. Will also, um, invite them to do a full interior inspection.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Uh, they just wanted me to convey that a lot, but I'll be reaching out to the homeowners who have, um, where I've created a log to track. Uh, the inquiry, so, um, looking forward to that, maybe it'll help us tighten up some of our records too, so.
And that bill is coming, I don't think I've seen it yet.
Look in the mail next week.
Look in the mail next week.
Next week.
Looking forward to that, too.
So are we.
Yeah. Indeed, we need the money.
No, and, oh.
Oh, that will be coming, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
No, just other than that, if there's any questions in administration or with respect to the financials.
Well, while we're talking about the billings, and we wouldn't be able to get it in place for this year, but we shouldn't lose track of the. Uh, the question that we were asked about irrigation systems. So, we do need to.
Well, that was a question that we had under correspondence, that was another question I mentioned, uh, from, from Gail, uh, Kaplan. So we can, we could, we could do it here, she asked, uh, specifically if we were going to include, if I remember correctly. Uh, water fee structure, uh, discussion, we had already had a discussion about a surcharge. For, uh, lawn watering, I guess we would call it commercially installed irrigation systems for residential properties. Is that, is that about it?
That's correct.
I love the view.
So we, we have a meeting, we staff as a capital projects meeting. On Monday, we can talk about it then, and have a recommendation for the May sixteenth meeting.
Great.
For a possible way to address it.
Incorporate a surcharge.
This might only be for, you know, uh, a very small period of time for this year, or even implementing it for next year, but. Just so we can.
Right. Yeah, I think the board had previously said that they're in favor of levying a surcharge, but that we wanted, we, we, we wanted town staff to. To look at it and then tell us how best to implement such a thing.
You talked about for the condo associations, or are you talking about?
Single family owners, so what we have is, we have a lot of irrigation systems that are being built. When the house is being built, right? We do not bill based on actual water usage.
I understand that.
So, and, and that's okay, that's the way that we've always done it because of the way we're structured, so. That isn't the question, the question that we got on a couple of occasions, and then Gail reminded in this email. Is, have we ever considered a surcharge or anything for those houses? And if a condo association has a, a commercially installed irrigation system for their whole. Because I think there is one at Green Peak.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Well, I think that's what brought on this discussion, because it's right out there in the open.
Right, so, would there, would there be a surcharge on those commercially installed irrigation?
But it wouldn't be on the condo association, it would be on the individual.
Mm, right.
That needs to go up the owners.
When my house was put in.
Yep.
The outside water spigots were counted.
That was the old system, that was the old.
That was the old system that we've gone away from now. Now, and, and we're, and we're not talking about somebody hooking a hose and having a sprinkler.
Right.
They would not have the surcharge, the surcharge would be specifically for something that is plumbed. Into the house and is automatically controlled.
Commercially installed.
Commercially installed system, so, let us, let us make a proposal to you, and then. So let us, let us make a proposal to you and then we can, we can discuss how to do it.
Sure.
Um because, you know, different towns do it differently, right Dylan? Some of them measure actual water use. They have a separate water meter for the irrigation system. You know, there are, there are a whole bunch of different options that we could look at. But let's, we'll, we'll come up with some options for you and and go from there. And just start the conversation because that's what the towns asked us to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I'd add, when we had this, I probably eight months ago now, last time we talked about this.
That long ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we left it as where it gets muddy is if water conservation is the intent of it, how do you pick and choose who you're going to allow to utilize water?
If, if we.
Without that intent. I think that's where we left it and that was kinda why we
Yeah.
hit the pause button uh only because.
Well, one reason was policy related, uh but the other was the practicality.
Correct.
I think, and we we landed more in the practical. Let's see if we can, how do we deal with that? Uh before we, I guess, have implementing regulations that would deal with such issues as as, as, as you raised, we first needed to look at practicality, I think, was how we approached it.
Right.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Thank you for reminds. There are other a number of issues related to this to include what happens if we, when we declare a uh a ban or a drought status.
Right.
And and you know, a lot of these homes are second homes and they just go on whatever's, whatever's happening.
Rain for a week.
And they'll, they were, yeah, and that's, I think, what sparked this whole discussion.
Exactly.
Cause they're right out in the open along uh along Snow's Brook Road. And in particular, I think it was Green Peak that did that. Okay, anything else on Steve? Alright, if we're done.
Financial.
Yep, if we're done with departments, let's move on to the year-to-date financial update. Uh any uh anything you'd like to add to it, Steve or Mark? Any questions from the board?
Order of the way here, through the year.
Yeah. And so is it for next meeting or will we be able to have the budget and the more full?
Yeah.
We, yeah, yeah, the percentage.
Yeah.
And all that, I think. Yeah, and how is that process going, getting all this integrated into?
That's Friday, right?
Well.
Yeah.
I feel it's going great. I feel like we're in a good place. I just wanted some reassurance from our auditor and also from customer ser- service at BSNA, the software system, for when we, what, what happens is you're adopting the town meeting budget and when you adopt that budget into twenty twenty-five, it's set. So before I hit that adopt button, I just wanna make sure from just a technical standpoint, everything looks good and is lining up. And that's why I had scheduled that um that discussion with the auditor and our software um support people on Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the first time doing it, we won't have this kind of a delay next year, I promise.
Sure.
Great. Good?
Yeah.
Anything, anything else on the financial update? Dan, did you have?
I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. I have questions. We move on to calendar review then?
Yep.
So our next regular select board meeting is three P M. Here on the sixteenth of April. Um, the uh select board will be meeting on the seventeenth of April here at nine A M. With the town road engineer to discuss uh the Boulder Path Road project. And on the next regular planning board meeting is on the tenth of April here at eight A M. I will not be able to make that meeting. It was my uh intent uh to ask Margaret Turner, who we earlier had appointed as my alternate on the planning with the, it has to be a select board decision of who fills that, that seat. So unless either one of you wanted to go to that ten April meeting and serve. She says ruefully. I will ask, I I haven't talked to Margaret, but I'll see if she's available. Yes, Kathy. That's right. Thank you. On the site plan review regulations, which is an internal public uh planning board document. I think we put it out. We've been delaying this only because we've just haven't been able to get get it set up right with regard to our schedule and noticing and and all of this, but the document is out there for anybody to to look at. So we're soliciting uh public input before the vote, uh before the planning board uh has its final discussion and vote on, which we hope, I think we hope to do at that ten ten April meeting, a public hearing and final discussion and and vote. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that detail. Anything else on on calendar review?
Yeah, just if Margaret can't do that.
Right.
Then let me know and I will.
Yeah, I'll touch, I'll touch base with her right away. She's an alternate on the planning board, so and she's attended just about all the meetings, so I just have to check with her ahead of time.
Yeah.
And then I let the chair know that that uh Margaret will be replacing me as the ex officio.
Mm-hmm.
Select board execution. Alrighty, shall we move on to board concerns and directives? Are there any uh ex officio updates, uh town core worker group solid weight, municipal solid waste?
Yep, we haven't met since last meeting.
Okay. And I guess we're just getting, starting to get up and running on our easement uh project and uh legislative project.
Yep, I'm studying as fast as I can. I'll be a lawyer in a couple of months.
It'll be a year-long plus process. Um, review revisions on select board and town manager work plans. Were there any revisions?
Uh, no, I made all of the updates. Um, are we, we're ready to move that forward, right? And just start.
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, I can, no one had any second thoughts about any other thing that I agreed on.
I'll distribute those uh via email and we'll start updating them at each meeting.
Work plan for twenty-five. Yeah, yeah, so we'll make it a regular, a regular agenda item.
Yep.
As we had in the past, actually, we had, we had a uh a line item for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so anyway, I have a couple uh, does anyone on the board have anything, board concerns or directives they'd like to raise? Nothing, Dan, Wendy?
No, I'm good.
Anything? So I had two uh quick things. I had a question about when we're going to uh repaint the crosswalks and what about the icons and all of that? And I think we had discussed it and in the fall, and I believe there's a D P W.
Megan has it on her work plan. Um, she has talked to the painting company. Um, and it's on their schedule to do it, weather dependent uh before Memorial Day.
And putting the reflectors in as well.
Putting the reflectors in. I have to check on the reflectors, but the posts in the interim uh would be, would be put in. She still has that section between the bridge and Village Road on Snow's Brook that she was supposed to be making arrangements for the reflectors. The in-ground.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Right, so that's the, the reflectors and we still need to make a decision, the board does, on uh icon placement, right? And which icons, I think, we have picked, I think. Intersections, did we make that decision? It's, have a look at it, it's just the fall. I know I have here. Did we, did we decide on, I think um much paper?
Yeah, it's a little.
Yeah, the, I know, I know I have it. I know I have it. I know I have. These are the ones we're going to go with, right? I think we had decided we were gonna go with.
Yeah.
This provided by
Okay.
By Megan. But do we need a uh, we need a decision on any aspect of this on the icons?
The intersections at the end of the crosswalks.
Right.
So we're good with the decision part of this. It's just a matter of.
So at each intersection, there is a crosswalk that'll get repainted.
Yeah.
And then at the ends of those.
Going into the.
Going into the multi-use path will be these icons.
Are they gonna be out in the road?
No, no, they'll be in the multi-use path.
Okay.
To, in order to get the families and uh pedestrians into the multi-use path.
Child bicyclists.
Bicycleist, a regular adult bicyclist will just be doing what they're supposed to be doing by state law, which is traveling with traffic and following all the rules.
When we put signs in the middle of the road, which we do in some cases, that gets very tight.
Yes, it does.
With.
Yeah, but it slows people down too.
And, and it's a traffic calming method.
It's it's almost dangerous because I've seen people go over to the to the other lane, you know, the multi-use lane.
Yep.
To get around that middle sign.
To slow down for the pedestrians.
To go into the pedestrian lane.
No, they do, and it, it happens.
Well, it's something I think.
Well, cause you don't wanna hit your car with those signs.
And we, we tried, we tried to we increased the distance between the posts.
Yep.
To give people room uh to do that, to get over. Um, whether it's the pedestrians or the bicyclists or the motorists to move over uh without making them so far apart that people make incorrect turns or get into the uh multi-use path lane. So we're trying to balance those two needs, but it is actually a traffic calming method where you narrow the lane width of the road visually so that people will slow down. That's, that's actually a.
Why they're there.
Yeah, like construction trucks coming through with the, when they're pulling trailers, they're not.
They should be.
They're not slowing down and they're not being careful.
Well, then, then we need to call DPS and we'll take care of that.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've had that issue uh already, just a few days ago.
Yes.
DPS.
It was called in the DPS.
Called into DPS and they took care of it.
Very well taken care of.
Yep.
In a very nice way, but very.
Yeah.
From what I understand.
Um, the main issue that I've seen is not so much a safety issue, but a delivery trucks and whatnot parking in the multi, because we widened the distance or lengthened the distance, I should say, between our.
Yeah.
What is not, what's the formal? Delineators, that, I can't remember. Stanchions.
Oh, yeah, the long.
So, and that's something that DPS is, is follows and you see that, I mean, people should just and they do go and and uh they do go and deal with that. And uh which brings to mind one other thing. I didn't, didn't think of it till just now, but I think the select board had had approved and asked uh DPS to take a look at a new uh speed board on um on a valley somewhere in the vicinity of of Golden Heights heading uh north.
Right.
So I believe uh Chief Noe said he'd look into that and get a report back to us, so we're still interested in, in that.
Yes, you are right.
Yep, that's, you mean the ones that light up and say how fast you're going?
Yeah.
The one that we tow around, I find to be totally obnoxious. And I would argue that it
Right.
That it takes away from the, from the town. It's, it's a very
Industrial looking.
No, it's just an intrusive thing.
Yeah.
Um, the
We went to that.
There's one when you're coming, what, when you're coming down around but towards the pond down there. And that one.
That one's built in.
And that's what we're talking about.
In, it's a little more sedated. It's not so
Right.
Completely obnoxious with the, the red flashing lights like this, you know, at you.
No, and that's what we, that's what we.
One mile an hour over and it's
Well, that's a function of the, the computer program, but that's the one that we're talking about installing, not a trailer version of it.
Yeah.
The, the, the reason we went to a trailer one is because uh uh we, it's also could be used for special events and whatnot uh or any other things, but and otherwise we have to potentially have more of these uh installed. Whereas I, I, I've found that.
I've lived in towns with none of them and
Right.
And traffic was fine. I don't think.
Well, we can discuss.
Changed the culture of the town when we start putting these flashing signs all over the place.
I think the difficulty is the differential in speed from Valley Road, uh from forty-nine onto Valley Road. You know, you're going fifty and then you have to cut it in half. And I think people just need that reminder, which is where the.
Coming into town, I'm okay. I see that.
Yeah, and well, another one further, further on.
We have the other one on the other side.
They, they tend to speed up heading north on Valley.
Right.
Cause it's a nice stretch. Anyway, I mean, we've had, we can continue to have this discussion. I mean, the sentiment of the board passed was that we need these signs and and despite the obtrusiveness.
I
But we can always discuss it further.
Have a design that isn't so obnoxious to the public, if you will. That it shouldn't be.
Right.
You know, the sign that comes on and says, slow down and you're okay is fine, but one that stands there and flashes lights at you like that.
Well, we can change this, we can change that speed.
You know, the one that we pull around town is just completely, in my mind, out of place for a town like Waterville Valley. I would argue that we should sell it and use that money to buy the other side.
Right, well. We can take up this discussion and at another time. As an agenda item, it's perfectly reasonable.
Sorry, I have opinions.
Uh, well, no, that's perfectly reasonable uh discussion point.
But it, it kind of belies your previous point about traffic, you know.
Well.
And if people are going slow, they wouldn't have to move over so much when they're, if they're afraid of hitting something.
Well, some of it has to do with with vehicles and such.
Yeah, but still, when you're going slower, things are easier to navigate.
Okay, I have one other item. Um this has to do with a uh wigwag article about a website that I think we were already aware of. This is the Waterville Valley AI dot news website. And uh it was uh published in the Wigwag, I think its latest report. And uh which is we have no comment on it. It's perfectly reasonable for any, anyone uh to uh to say anything they wanna say about uh about town operations or our meetings and whatever format they, they wish to use. Uh, my concern is, my notes here. My concern is, as I read through the, and it's the larger concern, I think, that we had expressed about uh, well, it's a, it's a two-part concern. One is um folks need to understand that that is not an official um, report, official uh minutes.
Yeah.
Official town document in any way, shape or form, and you can become confused because it looks somewhat official. So I don't know if that means uh asking, and that's all we can do. Uh, if this is a regular feature in the Wigwag, they have some sort of disclaimer that says this is not an official. Um, this is not an official town report. If you want any issues, if you have any issues, you see something that's an issue for you, please contact uh Town Hall uh to get the, the actual, what, what is the official report? That's something I think uh we may wanna consider or ask. If you guys agree, maybe ask uh the Wigwag if this is gonna be a regular outfit uh uh article.
Right.
Um, that was one, one concern. Um, the other concern I have has to do with, it's related, obviously, has to do with accuracy. There were several, I think, important inaccuracies in what was printed. Again, it's not our business to censor or to have any comment whatsoever on whatever people want to say. Um, but I, and I, I have made a list of them. I won't, I won't go through them, but there are a couple. There are a couple of big ones, like listing under the planning board. Everything said under the planning board, I think everything, was actually select board uh responsibility. And it only came up in the planning board as uh as an aside or as a report about select board activities, yet it's under the planning board. So people have the mistaken idea that they need to go to the planning board to talk about uh poker and pawn dredging, for example, if they had a question about, about that. So it could be, it could be um it could be uh misleading. Um there was, there was a conflation, Boulder Path project and and uh parking having to do with uh with uh tubing. It didn't mention tubing, but it meant, it made it sound like it was part of the, the Boulder Path uh With, uh, tubing, it didn't mention tubing, but it meant, it made it sound like it was part of the, the Boulder Path, uh. Uh, project, didn't really identify, uh, anybody, there was one name in there, but you had no idea who that person was, we all know who Dylan is. But other people reading it don't know who, so it just said Dylan said or words that affect, so I would just caution people, uh. Please come to the town office if you have any questions, especially if it's something you've heard or read that's not from an official town. Uh, report or document or what have you, so I just wanted to put all that out there.
There's.
For the record.
Right, and there's actually a podcast.
Associated as well.
To the town meeting.
Good point.
With attributions from people, myself included, because I was speaking as just a public citizen at that meeting. Um, names are being used in the podcasts without.
Um, identification?
Well, without, without notification or.
Oh, notification.
Really.
Right.
Um. I didn't know that that even existed until somebody pointed it out to me. And I listened to it and then I found out, oh, I said that, huh, well, it was actually an A I.
Generated.
Discussion, generated discussion, where there were presumably a man and a woman discussing the town meeting. And making statements referencing. Referencing me, referencing, uh, Mike Fergel.
They turned it into an informal conversation, as I recall.
And they turned it into a conversation.
Like a fifteen or seventeen minute.
The statements are things that I didn't.
Three-hour meeting.
Say in the words that, that are portrayed there, and so. Because it's not really, you know, you know, a transcript of the town meeting. It's actually just a, an A I-generated conversation about it. Um, you know, I would urge caution, uh, because we have. You know, there are different town members and, you know, various people who live in our community here where. They may not know that they're being, you know, cited, if you will, in in these podcasts.
Or even in a, a report that's generated, someone speaks up at a meeting.
Right.
They poten- they potentially.
Well, that's right.
Right, but it is a public meeting, so everything is there, uh, but it's. It's, it's the new world we live in when it comes to social media and whatnot.
Yeah.
So we've had to deal with this and Facebook and and other parts, and so this is another, another thing we have to deal with as, as a board and. People have to decide personally whether, um, if they're not a, a town official, whether, uh. Comments attributed to them are correct and are not, and just, and go to the owner of that site and. And discuss that with the owner, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. All right, um.
We have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Kathy, sorry about that.
You know, support the idea of reaching out to the wigwag or just to say, hey, you know what, I'm putting a disclaimer in and see if they're open to that.
Thank you.
Not, you know, official transcript, this is not coming from, because people might think it's coming from.
It looks, yeah, right.
Whatever, so just making it very clear, um, and, you know, and when I've gone through and reread minutes and stuff on, you know. A I definitely flips things around and just it's, you've got to really be careful and go through and. Make sure too that maybe they wait until the actual minutes are approved by you guys and then out, you know, I.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, too many constraints, but I'm just saying.
We can't really put any constraints.
At least reaching out, asking.
We'll reach out and ask to put a disclaimer just to make people understand that it's. Yeah, I think that is, I think that's a reasonable request and that's all we really can do, I think, at this. This point, um. Okay, finally, that's all I have for board concerns and directives, if no one else has anything, we'll move on to correspondence. I think I have one to add, I got, I got an email, I'm sorry, um, it. It got, ended up getting buried, it was, uh, it, I got it just a few days ago, it was from Ray, uh, Kucharsky.
Okay.
Who was asking about, uh, our plans that we said we were going to develop over the winter with regard to some kind of veterans memorial. And I've not answered him, but the bottom line is that we have yet to develop any, any plans, I know, I think, Mark, you and I discussed this.
Yeah.
Not that long ago, it's not that it's something we're, uh, avoiding or anything, but, uh, we just haven't, we just haven't gotten to it yet and, um. It's something I think that we had generally agreed to that we'd like to see if it was practical, but we haven't really gone beyond that. So I don't know if you want to have a further discussion on it, if you want to think about it, Mark, or if you want to talk to, to Megan a bit. Uh, I think it's a good idea, I don't, I don't think we're looking at, uh, Ray was looking at anything extensive. Just some way as other towns do, uh, recognize, uh, uh, the veterans, uh, that have, uh, served. Uh, that are residents of the, of the town. Perhaps through some connections you can get an M one or, uh.
Yeah, sure.
Or, uh, Bradley or something, as they in the towns, you know, they have these things, uh.
Problem.
Yeah, inofferable.
Oh, no. No, it has to be user.
Yeah.
No.
But something, something recognizing, so if we can add that, maybe perhaps that's something we add to our, as we said, we try to have it developed by this year Memorial Day. So obviously, we're not going to meet that.
Not gonna make.
That deadline. Maybe, so, yeah, could we put it on our, uh, strategic work plan, uh, for the, for the year? Does that have some, try to have something in place by, uh, November eleventh?
Hmm.
Guys, good with that, all right?
Yeah, I'm good with that, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so, and a, a walk-on to the strategic plan, as it were. That's all I, that's all the correspondence I am aware of, does anybody have anything else on the matter? All right, so, um, it looks like we can now move into, we have a couple, uh, items in non-public, so if someone may, thank you, Kathy. If someone would like to make a motion to go into non-public and second.
For, uh, um.
Legal versus for reputational and legal, thank you, I keep on forgetting to, to say that.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, and so we all will unanimously approve that, uh, Kristen, the move into a non-public session for, uh, reputational and legal, uh, matters. So I know the one we had, I think, uh, one of the ones, I think we want Steve to be here, did you want anyone else to be here?
Yeah, I was gonna shut the door, um.
I think we need to wait till we get.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, oh, I thought he was closing the door, we needed Dylan, right?
No, not, no, I don't, I.
No, I only see, I don't know if the other one you had, whether you needed, uh.
No, it'll be just Steve.
Just Steve for both, okay.
Yeah, just Steve. I just wanted to let you know that when we meet with Jim Stein Kraus. Or any town council.